Do you have? What I want to do. I got it. You never do this in the state. I have four. A lot of speakers. Can you see? Three. See my heart and it was you. So you can keep up your name.
Yes, you did.
Yes. I'm seeing Barbara things back there. I should probably go to the hand over to today. Talking about the concert, Tony, the public work. We twenty. What we want more. It's a little weird. All right. The other one is like. Because I'm glad. Hello, here are the ladies. So many doors. I don't know what you mean. I was looking at that lady. I had like two would be lying. I'm obviously. It seems. Yeah. Um, T. All right. Now, while you get the channel, we will just call three words. Please start with a little. Counselor Basman's.
Present.
Mayor Proton, yes, here. Counselor Woodruff.
Here.
Here.
Here, thank you. Uh, can we have the introduction of the translator, please?
Uh, yes, mayor, they should be able to do their introduction any, any.
Okay, sounds good. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Diego Pons here today. I'll be off the Community Language Cooperative, the CLC, here with my colleague Sam Guzman tonight. As always, thank you for continuing to invite us to your meeting. The organizers of the meeting have made a commitment towards language justice. What this means is that we continue trying to help create a space so people can participate and engage in the language of their heart, just simply a language to each most comfortable in. So we'll continue using simultaneous interpretation here on Zoom to create the space in English and Spanish. Once I finish saying this in English, I'll repeat the instructions in Spanish, but at that moment, we start the interpretation. Once interpretation is on, you'll be able to see that globe icon. This is interpretation. There in the bottom right hand corner of your computer screen, we'll ask you to please select that globe icon when it appears on your screen and please select to prefer language. If you happen to be joining the meeting on your cellphone or your tablet, please be on the lookout for the more button or the three dots button so that you can select your preferred language this other way. If you're not fully bilingual, we'll ask you to please select to prefer language so you can utilize interpretation in case anyone were to speak in the opposite language. If you are bilingual, you can just feel free to listen to everyone in their original language. Once you do select the language channel, if you would like to do so, you can always select the original audio to not have to hear both languages at the same time. And as always, just please be mindful of the speed in which you're speaking. Just please make sure you're speaking at a conversational pace and please make sure you don't pick up your reading speed. So thank you so much for that. When I saw those at the Oye Todas, mi nombre es Diego Pons. Estoy aquí hoy de parte de la cooperativa comunitaria de la justicia al lenguaje, sí o sí, hoy con mi colega Sam Guzman. Muchas gracias por continuar invitándonos a su reunión. Los jóvenes sabres de esta reunión se han comprometido hoy a servir la justicia al lenguaje. Lo que eso significa es que queremos crear un espacio para que todas las personas puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma a su corazón. Simplemente el idioma en el que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Vamos a continuar hoy utilizando la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Ahora, cuando yo termino de decir esto, se va a activar la interpretación. Yo cuando se activa la interpretación, usted va a poder ver ese icono del globo de la tierra que hay en la interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Por favor, asegúrense de seleccionar ese icono del globo de la tierra cuando aparezca en su pantalla y por favor seleccione su idioma preferido. Pero si usted está asistiendo hoy a esa reunión en su celular o su tableta, por favor, busque la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o posiblemente el botón de tres puntos para que pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esta otra manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le vamos a aconsejar a que seleccione su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Si usted sí es bilingüe, se puede sentir y ver escuchado todos hoy en su idioma original. Y como siempre, cuando usted selecciona su idioma, puede hacer clic en silenciar el audio original para no escuchar ambos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, with that, we're going to move on to, I believe we're on opening remarks. Opening remarks by mayor and council. Would other councils like to start, please, and I'll, I'll end?
Sure, I will start. So I wanted to give a little bit of background and some excitement regarding the Tour de France. It started on July first and concludes in Paris on July 23rd. Two cyclists who grew up in Durango are in the race this year, and the city would like to wish them luck. Quinn Simmons of Durango is the current road cycling U.S. national champion and the youngest rider in the Tour de France. As the U.S. national champion, he wears a special Stars and Stripes jersey and has spent significant time at the front of the race helping his team, which is sponsored by Trek. Simmons family runs a contracting company in Durango and his entire family are fixtures of the cycling community here. He spent the weeks immediately before leaving for the tour, training here in Durango and was the winner of the 2023 Iron Course Bike Race from Durango to Silverton. Sep Cous of Durango is in his fourth Tour de France, riding for Jumbo Visma, the team expected to win the team competition. Sep is the only American to win a stage in the Tour de France in the past 12 years. His job this year is to help one of his teammates win the Tour de France. He has been doing an outstanding job setting the pace and protecting that teammate in the early days of the tour this year. Cous graduated from Durango High School in 2013. After a successful college career at University of Colorado, he turned professional and spends most of his time training with his team in Europe. Professional cyclists in Europe are celebrities similar to movie stars in the United States. The Tour de France is the most watched and most attended sporting event in the world. It lasts more than three weeks with 21 stages or individual races that clo- that average close to 100 miles each day. The winner is the rider with the lowest time after all 21 stages. A hundred and seventy-six of the best riders in the world start the race. This year, only six Americans started the race, so the fact that two are from Durango is absolutely incredible and something everyone in Durango should be proud of.
Thank you so much. Yes, big congratulations to the two. We will be watching carefully here from Durango. Any other counselor?
If I could go real quick.
Yes, please.
Uh, I just wanted to give a shout out to one of our own, Ellen Babers, the event planner for the city, for helping facilitate an awesome Fourth of July weekend and week. She hustled all over the city, ensuring each event was a success and worked tirelessly to make sure things went off without a hitch. So thank you, Ellen, and your team for making everyone feel welcome, both local and guests alike for the festivities. So thank you, Ellen.
Any other counselor before I go on? Okay. Um, all right, I am going to, uh, just a couple notes. We're starting implementing a new agenda format for our meetings, starting tonight. Designed to make our meetings more efficient and effective. As you know, we have new staff on board and with them, they bring new ideas and new ways of doing business. And so we are starting some of that tonight. Some of the goals of the format reorganization is to ensure that important matters receive adequate time for discussion and decision making, to allow council members to focus on essential issues first, to provide the public with a logical and well organized format, and to be as transparent as possible in organizing a way where there is a clear record of decisions made and actions taken. So many things look a little different on our agenda tonight, so thank you for bearing with us as we proceed through this new agenda format. There might be a few hiccups along the way, but I think we're going to get better and better as we go. So I also wanted to take a moment in my opening remarks to comment on the first municipal jury trial that we held here in Durango in 24 years. This was a very big deal for our community. This trial was requi- held on Wednesday, June 21st, at the request of the defendant. Typically, the defendants simply appear before the judge and handle their charges in that way, but in this case, the defendant requested a jury by trial. And to make this happen, there was a huge effort behind the scenes on a part of our city staff, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that effort. It deserves recognition and, and mention some names who worked really hard for contacts, for some contacts. Local municipal jury trials are very important for our community for a lot of reasons. Number one, they, they ensure that outcomes per, you know, they, that they reflect our local values and perspectives. They also, by involving local jurors in the process, they promote community engagement. They provide public education because our jurors then are involved directly in the issues that are facing our community, and it provides transparency by involving our local jurors in the process. But in order to make this happen, like I said, our clerk, clerk's office had a very, very heavy lift. They worked extensively with Associate Judge Todd Norwell, Norvell, on logistics, from sending out jury summons batches to coordinating with the IT department for proper recording of all sessions, to figuring out how to lay out the chairs and the tables for proper viewing and recording, to ensuring that all parties and materials were present and securing any evidence, and working with our jurors to ensure that proper procedures were performed and conducted to ensure fair and just trials. So I'm synthesizing down so much work that took place behind the scenes here, just because of time. But I did want to recognize a few people. Paula, Paula Lierman, 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 our court administrator, Tracy Harwood, our court clerk, Rita Warfield, our part-time court security officer, and Hannah Carpenter, our part-time court clerk. I also want to recognize Fay, our city clerk. Thank you, Fay, for your oversight and leadership. But it's such an important function and just a special note to Hannah Carpenter, who was a new employee with the city of Durango, had worked with us for four weeks at the time, and she took on the role as bailiff. So she was working firsthand with these jurors, ensuring that they followed all the proper procedures to ensure a fair and just trial. Very, very important work for our municipality. And so I just really wanted to thank all of these individuals for their, for their help in ensuring fair and democratic processes were taking place here in our community. So thank you again for all of you. Lastly, I want to make a motion to amend the agenda before we get started. We have currently public comment for non-agenda related items, item number 17 at the end of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to move public conduct, comment for non-agenda items to item number 16 on the agenda and move executive session to the end of the agenda, item number 17. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Basman's.
Yes.
Your question, you?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes, thank you. We have no presentation or proclamations today. Does, we're on requests for excused absences. Does any counselor have a request for an excused absence?
I have a little comment on that. I think it's only required for if you want to be, it's not, it's voluntary. So I'm not sure if this is a requirement. This is only agenda. I did it once because I thought it'd be proactive because it was a longer period.
I appreciate that. I'm sure our city attorney has a comment.
Sure. The city charter says that for absences from regularly scheduled meetings disqualifies you and creates a vacancy on the council. So we put this in place so that there's an opportu- and it requires, I'm sorry, to excuse an absence, it requires a vote of the council. So in order to have something on this new agenda in place to where a counselor has a reason not to be at a meeting, it can be excused and therefore they wouldn't trigger that vacancy in the office. So it is, it is a formal requirement of the charter that if you have an absence that needs to be excused to avoid the four consecutive meetings being missed, this would be the place to take care of it.
Thank you for the explanation.
So that answered your question?
Yeah, but because I think it's, it's going to not happen for any of us, for excused are more than four unexcused absences means someone's out of the office for, what is that, two and a half months? I, is it worthwhile to put it on there all the time or do we eliminate it so we only when it's needed? Just a little comment, nothing else.
It's also an opportunity if there are certain other employees in the city that by charter or by ordinance, their absences are required to be excused by both the council. So it's a good placeholder. I think this is probably the most we'll ever talk about it. But again, it's got a legislative reason to be there.
No further comment. Thank you.
All right, moving on to city manager updates.
Jose. Yes, Mayor and Council, I do have one update. I'm going to ask Allison Baker, our Public Works Director, to come up and just update the city council on the water main break on Gigline Gulch and just give a little bit of a overview and what could be expected with that break.
Good evening, counselors and mayor. I appreciate your attention this evening. Last Thursday, we had a break under Gigline Gulch in a thirty inch pipeline. It goes from the San Berita intake right beside San Berita Water Reclamation Facility. Goes up Gigline Road and is one, is our one supply to College Mesa Water Treatment Plant from behind this river. So while we typically do not use that during the winter months, in the summer, it is our supplemental water supply. So this has been our very toasty week. We're up in the nineties, so it would be an ideal time to have.
Thank you. Uh, it would have been an ideal time to have that supplemental water, but we are shut down. To, um, as of today, the reservoir terminal may, terminal reservoir at College Mesa dropped from its normal over the last two days, dropped from its normal 24 feet at the intake to approximately 22.4. And at that point, our stage two drought restrictions are enacted. Tom did a great press release on that, and there is a lot of information. If you want to go to our website and look in the utility sections, we have our municipal drought management plan from 2020. But in case you didn't want to print that out, I did bring copies just of the drought response and the stages that I can share so that everybody will have a copy so you know what potential items could be coming up. At stage two, we're still basically a voluntary water reduction. We've requested reductions from Fort Lewis College, from the golf course and from Parks Department. So those reduction, with those reductions in place, we anticipate that we'll be able to stay at a stage two, which again is voluntary reductions in water use until if our calculations are approximately accurate on the usage between now and next Monday, we should be fine with those limitations and working on currently IDing, locating the pipe, getting the prepared materials in place. We've had a contractor start work, excavating to locate the break under Gigline Gulch. Pipe's approximately 10 feet deep, so it's significant excavation effort. It's also wrapped in plastic, so finding the pipe is not immediately finding the leak location, so it's requiring some, some exploration. And as of five o'clock tonight, we haven't actually pinpointed the location of the break, so that work will continue tomorrow. Um, once we have the break, section of pipe will be cut out and replacement repair parts will be used to make, make the repair and we're optimistic that there's only one break. There wasn't any sign that led us to believe there were, would be more than one, but until you fix the one and turn it back on, there's no, no guarantees. So that and reasonable construction sequencing is reasonable to anticipate that we would be back online by Monday morning. Um, again, that's subject to finding the actual leak location, there not being any additional leaks. So there's a little bit of subjectivity in that estimate, but based on that uh, calculation of the usage of water between now and Monday, we at stage two should provide adequate supply. If not, we look at moving to a stage three drought restriction. That would have to be issued by Jose Percode. There are a lot of details in the information that I've shared with you. There uh, actions that are taken on supply side and demand side for both city residential and commercial users. Things can be as simple as city not washing any vehicles. Parks limiting the, the irrigation during the, of park areas during the shutdown. So this is one of those times when we would love to have a pipeline from late night horses as a backup where we just, we're, we're cutting it close and I'm anticipating that we will be successful and obviously we'll continue to supply potable, safe drinking water for the city. But um, that's when the redundancy becomes uh, a lot easier to support when we have these times where the intersection of what will and will not work is a very small percentage of difference. Can I answer any questions on that or information?
Yeah, I've got one real quick. Allison, do you have any idea like what the refill rate would be to get us kind of back up to that 24 foot threshold? Do you think, I anticipated a timeline, we'll hit to continue with those stage two restrictions and so we get that kind of filled back up?
With the additional, if we maintain the irrigation restrictions that were, not restrictions, request, requests that we currently have, that we get a lot of support of on those. It reduces the, the usage rate so that our refill would happen. Uh, if it started Monday, we would be out of stage two restrictions by Thursday. Coincidentally, we, Jose and I were doing a tour of the water plant on Monday and happened to know that the water level was at 24 feet Monday about noon, so it is a small enough reservoir that we can see a significant difference if we're not getting the, the refill during the summer that we need from the Animus River.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I appreciate Allison, the update and also what we're doing to fix that water leak as a top, top priority. It's concerning.
Yes.
So that's the first thing I wanted to say. I had a couple of more for my informational purpose. What leak identified when the pumping took place or was it after it's been running for a long time?
The pump had been running for I'd say three to four weeks. I don't have an exact number, but it had been on for a significant period this, this year. Yes.
So because the, that pump, the water supply gets two feeds, one from, what is the name?
Florida River. That's our primary supply, which is still running a hundred percent. We're not having any problems with that. So that's, that's good. And that's our best quality water, which is easier to treat. But we do supplement it with Animus River water during the summer, during high demanding times.
Yeah, it's great that we have two sources.
Very much. Yes.
Now, the other question I had, that might, that old, I think, is, is that something? So first, I obviously problem, repair it and get it working. I'm curious to see afterwards if we're going to follow up because I think not that old. Is that correct?
I think when we identify the leak, we'll be able to determine if it was a particular damage. It's, as you know, right at the base of the, a very steep incline coming down the ridge toward into Gigline Gulch. Just see if there was any geologic impact, if there was road movement. I think we have a lot of questions before we can really determine if it was an age-related issue or a particular, if it was a joint failure, there are possibilities that we'll be able to provide a lot more information on that once we've seen the actual damage that's causing the leak.
I, I think it shows a couple of concerns. One is luckily we have two, and two infrastructures.
Very much.
That, you know, if everything happens at once, we have a problem because we had Florida River, their mine damage.
Last year, yes.
And the other one is the access of that whole neighborhood. Be an impact where it's shut off, then we have another big problem. So the things that I take away from it, hopefully things fixed, but that we should remind and look at.
I appreciate that, and it's certainly one of the. I appreciate that and it's certainly one of the, our, our supply lines are a major concern to us and one of the ones that we're working to get sophisticated documentation on initially the Florida because it is an older line. Um, and following up with this information on this line that we can actually have cameras that go through the lines and provide light our information and as well as photos and in- information on the joints and specifics, if there are any movement of the pipes, things like that. So we're moving in that direction and as far as the, the impact of one break, we, we have been able to maintain uh, local traffic throughout the closure. So everybody has had access, including all the businesses and the multiple condominium and apartment facilities all have access during, during the work we're doing.
Thank you, and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, all right, with that, moving on to public comment on agenda items only, items eight, nine, ten and eleven. And Ms. Farmer, can we get the signup sheet, please? And while you're getting that, I'll just reiterate for the community that um, since this is the first time we're going through this new agenda format, this public comment section is for public comment on items we're considering in our business meeting tonight. Items that we will be voting on tonight. Um, to be clear, this is not time for public comment for items not currently on the agenda for consideration in this meeting. Public comment for items on this agenda for considerate, or for, public comment for items not on the agenda for consideration tonight will be considered separately, um, item number sixteen. So we still are limiting public comment to three minutes. Counsel will not respond from the dais. Please direct your comments to counsel and, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and if you're a resident of the city. And we'll start with Ms. Sweetie Marbury.
Good evening. I came to address the excess lodgers tax. And I didn't send you an email because I believe in facing face-to-face communication. Um, when the trolley first came about, long before any of you ever lived here, uh, there was a twenty-five cent charge and a fifty cent charge, and then it went free. And I would always get on at Brookside Park, that included the high school kids. It was standing room only, going downtown with kids and locals, which was wonderful. And then it was changed to one dollar and ridership went down. I can see it, you can see it when you see the trolleys. And so right now, I really appreciate the free trolley, June, July and August. I read it in the paper. Um, I'm an advocate for using the lodgers tax excess to extend the trolley to, to at least October. Because we have a whole new group of tourists coming in September and October, a different crowd. And what I see when I do ride that free trolley, I see locals, I see kids and I see tourists. And so I'm a believer in helping the people of Durango. And I believe that's really important. If you're concerned about parking, if you're concerned about um, finding a place to park, then the free trolley certainly is a great idea. So I'm advocating for that excess lodgers tax to go into transportation because you're really helping the local people. It's great that it goes through uh, Crestview, for example. That's been a wonderful addition, the same thing with Highway one sixty. And so I see great benefit from our trolley being free and I hope you do too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that was the only public comment we had unless we have any virtually.
Uh, no mayor, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on then to consent agenda, uh, Ms. Farmer, can we have a reading of the consent agenda items?
Eight point one is approval of meeting minutes. Eight point one one is the minutes from the June sixth, two thousand twenty-three city council regular meeting. Eight point one two is approval of minutes of the June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three city council study session. Eight point one three is approval of minutes of the June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three city council regular meeting. There is also eight point two final reading of ordinances. Eight point two one is a final reading of ordinance zero, two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero one one, creating an open space parks ranger position and adding it to the Durango Municipal Code. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there any counselor that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Do we have any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bosman's.
I'm just wondering if I should abstain because I missed some of the meetings or if I can. Yes.
Mayor Prochendee?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Gazi?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Um, all right, then moving on to resolutions, consideration for adoption. A ten point one, uh, discussion and possible action concerning possible approval of a resolution allocating the twenty twenty-two lodgers tax over it for sustainable tourism marking, marketing, excuse me, do we have a motion? We need a motion to start this discussion.
So was there going to be a presentation?
We can do, from a staff perspective, uh, knowing that I missed the, the last council meeting, uh, there really wasn't direction given from the council in moving forward, so we do have staff's recommendation. Uh, and so then I know it's up for the council to, I believe it was to come back to y'all to discuss more and that's kind of where we're at.
And then I'll, I'll just make a quick comment procedurally. There was, we did get a comment from the public that we had not handled this correctly at the last meeting.
Thank you.
There is no rule in place that if a motion dies, that you can't immediately bring it back. Um, you had a motion that was a tie vote because we were one council short, that's a failed vote. Um, there was some question about what we would do next, whether someone would offer a same, a different motion on the same topic. That didn't happen, but then there was a successful motion to table it specifically to this meeting. So even though that was questioned by the public, very rightfully so, I never mind being questioned about procedure and you guys shouldn't either. Um, we're perfectly able to go forward on a motion tonight, should one come and then get a second. This is money that you do have to decide how to spend, so it can't, you have to decide at some point what to do.
I appreciate you very much clarifying that um, for the record. Maybe it would be helpful if you pull up the original motion that we had from, from staff recommendation. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion from counsel?
I uh, I will make a motion, if you bear with me for one second. I will make a motion to approve that part of the resolution R twenty twenty-three twenty-seven for a budget adjustment to the twenty twenty-three appropriations for the sustainable tourism marketing going to visit Durango in the amount of hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, but that's.
I made an adjustment to the, to the resolution. So that is the motion I would like to make.
I understand your intent, you intend to move to only vote on the portion going to visit Durango in the amount of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, and that would be to start the discussion. I, I listened to the meeting, I know the details that were discussed last time. And I think it's good to have that discussion at a certain point because I can retract the motion, I can.
So then we would just have multiple motions, correct? To send the full three sixty-one?
Correct. All right. This is, you guys can figure it out how you like, but multiple motions to dispose of the entire fund would be appropriate.
Do we have to use up all the funds?
Yes, at some point.
Is, isn't, is a potential motion to say, I want to, let's just throw it out there. If I say I would like to have three hundred and sixty-one thousand going to sustainable market per the ballot language? Is that, because you don't have, do, do we have to spend it on projects just to spend it? Or can we just leave it in an allocated fund for specific use?
My understanding is that you have a surplus where the administration is requesting a vote on specifically how to spend it. But you already have the guidance of the language which the prior attorney interpreted, which I interpreted. Um, and that is that it gives you discretion to spend it in multiple different ways that are within the context of the voter. The vote passed the, the lodger tax.
But the answer I think is, uh, on this one, Counselor Bosman's, you don't have to. It would just go into the fund balance. Uh, there's nothing that requires you to have to spend, uh, just that we would have to allocate that and market as only for sustainable tourism. Could it be spent in four, but there's never a point where you have to spend it all. If not, it would just go to the fund now.
Because it's driven by the city administration, so let me add one sentence.
Let me, I want to make sure you're not, it can't just go to the general fund balance. It has to stay in the individual category that was approved by.
It would not go into a general fund balance, it's lodger tax, so it would go into the lodger tax fund balance.
Okay.
I'd like to amend my motion. I'd like to move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three twenty-seven for a budget adjustment for the twenty twenty-three appropriation to go uh, for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to go to visit Durango and the remaining amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand to remain in the fund dedicated to the sustainable marketing uh, per of the lodger snacks allocation as it was voted.
Do I have a second?
Can I clarify something quickly? Is it okay if I try to get clarification on something before? If it doesn't, if it goes to the lodger's tax fund balance. Sustainable. Yeah, I mean, but it has to be, okay, I kind of wrap my head around where that, where that money quote unquote goes. Any monies that are not, or encumbered, just like any other budget, just goes into the fund balance. It would go and it'd stay in the account, uh, it would still have to be used as per the ballot language. So I think the simplest answer is you just don't have to spend it all. If you wanted to wait until two meetings from now, three meetings now, four meetings now to, to spend it, you can do it. You just don't have to come up today with all three hundred and sixty-one thousand. Anything that's left unspent remains in the fund.
Okay, do I have a second for Counselor Bosman's motion on the table? Okay, so seeing none, motion fails. Uh, do I have another motion from counselor or I, I will make a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-three twenty-seven for a budget adjustment to the twenty twenty-three appropriations to reflect an additional allocation of three hundred and sixty-one thousand of the twenty twenty-two lodgers tax related to sustainable tourism marketing as follows. Sustainable sustainability, a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Transportation, a hundred thousand and visit Durango, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And I'd like to, one clarification, I would like to uh, follow up on Sweetie Marbury's recommendation that a portion of the transportation funds go to extending the free trolley through October. Thought that was a good idea. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
You have a roll call, please.
Oh, no.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see anyone, I'm sorry, no, no one.
Sorry, I was trying to click my thoughts, um. I'm not going to re, re-go over again what I already discussed um, last meeting. You know, the, the only thing that I would like to add is that I think there's a lot of small businesses um, in our community that are reliant upon Visit Durango to do their marketing for them. And I also think that small businesses are reliant upon the grant opportunities that, that Visit Durango provides. Um, you know, as per what um, Rachel went over earlier this afternoon in our study session with um, the um, whatever it is, they're, they help other businesses with their, with their marketing efforts um, and help consult with those businesses. And I think I really feel like that this, these are, we, we need EV stations, I think it's going to be a great thing for our community. But I'm, I don't want to create this slippery slope where we open the door for other counselors in the future to potentially use these excess funds for something other than just because, I mean, in my opinion, I think, you know, we have some of the best breweries in the world here in Durango. I would argue that um, it's partly because we have great water. It's partly because we have good people that, that make the beer. But I don't want to, because we have great breweries and that's a tourism draw that we now help fund the water district uh, with those funds, because I know it's a stretch, but I'm trying to, there's, there's some mental gymnastics that goes into it all. But I really don't want to get this convoluted and I don't want to go use this bait and switch model where the voters voted on something with the expectation of X and all of a sudden we're going to change it to Y. So that's my concern.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I think I've, I'm not sure how we do it in five minutes, but since you all have, oh, you're doing it?
Yeah.
Are you starting? I listened to the prior meeting and that, when this was discussed and I heard very good arguments. I agree that the, that EV chargers and signage certainly seem a far stretch to be included under sustainable marketing. In my opinion, and they seem way more applicable for transportation, transit and equipment allocation. And in the worst case, we have also our council determination. So adding these under sustainable marketing sets precedent and as mentioned before, as soon as you do that and you add, you can say the libraries is helping tourism. We can say downtown next steps is uh, helps tourism housing. And we need workers for tourism industry, so we can also, I think we really are veering away from the ballot language. So when I go through the three uses that were uh, mentioned, I support most of Visit Durango's requests, even though I uh, do believe that we need to clarify a little bit more on every entity's role, especially bike racks and trash receptacles. For the EV chargers, um, I rented once an electric vehicle and all I was trying to figure out is where can I charge that rental vehicle while I'm eating something? So I totally support uh, EV charging stations, but I do not support it being funded by the sustainable marketing allocation. And instead, I would suggest that we give the city manager a very clear direction to come up with a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars requested for the EV charging stations from another location. Um, so we can tap into that grant money. And yes, we have around a hundred million dollars in total fund balance, partially restricted, partially reserves, et cetera. But we have, we are in a very good financial sc- the situation. We have excessive funds in various funds. I understand the actual revenues, et cetera, uh, that we have as a city are positive compared to the budget forecasts. And we typically every year seems complete only a small fraction of the capital projects that we forecast to complete in a year. So if that is a continuous trend, we will have a lot of money left. Regarding the signage, I believe the signage was not that done, was done not that long ago. I'm not very supportive of having another consultant do an audit. And in the wording in the agenda item is developing an inventory, development of a signage plan, design of signs. So I am very curious to see how much of the hundred thousand dollars that is being requested here from sustainable marketing does go to a consultant and how much the actual signs and installation would cost. But either way, no matter how you look at it, the signs are more associated with transit, transportation and equipment. Similar as what Sweetie was saying, I support the transit, I actually think it's great. But how we fund it is uh, a different topic. How far am I on time?
Three, you're three minutes and a half.
In, okay. Oh, okay, there you go. I can make my whole call, I probably don't even need my next. The bottom line is the voters decided how these monies should be spent and we should honor that vote. If we believe that given the significantly higher lodger stacks collections that my voters now might have changed their mind, then we should bring it to the voters and ask for a different allocation. And we can reassess it, bring it back to the voters. In the meantime, this is what we have, we should honor that ballot language. And let's see. I think the other question I had was the excess funds, if we legally have to spend them, in my opinion, I would, I don't spend just to spend if it's my money. And if it's our taxpayers' money, I have the same position. I don't want to just spend it because we have it. I want to spend it wisely. And if we don't have a use for it right now, then hopefully there will be opportunities or projects that come up that require those funds. Uh, thank you, Rachel, for sending that email on the requested events, which would be specific to the ballot language. Thank you, Rachel, for sending that email. We requested events which would be specific to the ballot language for sustainable marketing. You mentioned in your email, the grant applications was for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we only awarded a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and we're in July. So. If anything, if we have to make a decision. There is, there is something that goes straight to our community and our tourism industry. So. That is my point. So I will not support that motion.
Any other counselors?
Yeah. First, I love the timer. Thank you. Yeah, that's great. I won't use my full five minutes so I can say thank you for the timer. I do want to say a couple of things. In terms of the ballot language, it does not say in the ballot language that fifty-five percent goes to visit Durango. It says fifty-five percent goes to sustainable tourism. Now, Rachel and visit Drango knows that I love what they do. And I think they do a wonderful job with it. We have a contract with them for one point eight million dollars. If you look at like other like towns and similar, Rachel actually sent it to me. I think of all the breakdown of like. Marketing note, we're like right in the middle and I fully supported that contract with visit Durango. We, you talk about a slippery slope. A slippery slope could be the next council saying, I want that one point eight million dollars to go to four different entities and not visit Durango. And not have a cohesive, right? So like, that can happen anytime. It's not just like. This excess revenue that we're deciding where it goes. Is that like that slippery slope? You can't bind future councils and that's what. This is so that slippery slope will always be there. And so showing visitor and showing us like the successes they're having in their sustainable marketing. Which is and and giving us options like the going through to local events and. And helping them market and putting on the, you know, trainings that they do for that. Like, that's what's like amazing and it's going to push all future councils. To continuing to support visit Durango. I do think it's important to note that the ballot language didn't, I mean, that. That didn't translate a lot. And there's a lot of people that push back on visit Durango getting more than one point eight million dollars. And looking at things like longer free transit. I mean, my kids have been using the transit now all summer long. Because it's free. Not that we couldn't do it for a dollar, but it's just so much easier just to like go and get on it and use it. And so. So stuff like that I fully support. You talk about the EV chargers. I can't tell you how many people who were at CML. Like constantly were like, and we were talking about the cast conference coming here. It was supposed to be here in October, but it got pushed out. So many people were talking about like EV chargers and Durango. How can they get here and to spend a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to get a million? Dollar, that a million dollar grant, like it seems like a no brainer to me and it is sustainable marketing. And so you might not have, like I might not have. A EV car and I might not ever use it, but or in the near right right now, maybe in the future. But people that travel here do and they look and see where they're at to travel. It it does meet those requirements. So I keep pushing back, like if we only say visit Durango gets all this money, I think we're gonna have people that get. You know, push, push back more on that ballot language and then we're going to go back out and like really change it, which I'm not necessarily in supportive either. So. Those are just my two cents on all that.
Thank you, Councilor Yasi.
Oh, I think I said enough last time.
All right, well. The, I just to reiterate some of my thoughts is I appreciate. What Jessica Beal and Counselor Beal was saying about the ballot language. I do, you know, I think that we've received advice now from two attorneys. Our current attorney and Dirk Nelson, who both said that the language was intentionally left such that. We could spend it on tourism related issues. I too very much appreciate visit Durango's efforts and what they're doing. And I think that. They're doing excellent work and making great progress. I also think that your request for funds of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for example. Is very similar to the same type of block grant funding that we give out. We always get more requests for block grants than we can provide. But we don't just. Meet that because we can. We 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 carefully evaluate all of the options and we prioritize what's most important. To meeting the community needs. I am would, I will be personally very disappointed if we decide not to fund the EV stations. We have two fast charging stations at the transfer center. But to me, taking advantage of the grant that we have is. This is a substantial financial opportunity for our community. I think it demonstrates our commitment to sustainability and environmental stewardship. With EVs producing less greenhouse gas emission and air pollution. I think it will have a positive economic impact as an eco-friendly tourist destination. And the popular, we all know that the popularity of EVs continues to ride rise. More travelers are traveling and using electric vehicles and looking for destinations that provide convenient charging infrastructure. So as we look to the future, having robust charging infrastructure to attract tourists to our community. So that they will come to our, you know, community and spend their tourist dollars on at our restaurants and in our hotels. I think that's really important. That's important business. That's an important business model. It's a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars we're talking about out of three hundred and sixty-one thousand. It gets, it also, we are, you know, leveraging that with the grants to a million. I think that's substantial. I don't, I don't discount that at all. And I do absolutely think that it's sustainable tourism. So to me, that that works and. So I I just reiterate that. I'll be very disappointed if we lose that grant. The other thing is that we. The transportation to me is very important. Tourists use the transportation and our community uses the transportation. And we are short transportation funding. If we don't want to put it towards signage. Let's put it towards another route and more free bus. I I think that's a fabulous opportunity for our community. And so I I would like to see that money go to transportation and and then the rest to continue to support. Visit Durango's efforts to provide grants in our community. That's my spiel in three minutes. I think I did. Are you sure you don't want to say anything, Councilor Yasi? Okay, then we'll go back. Okay.
Alrighty, after our last meeting two weeks ago, I did some research on the EV chargers in Durango. And there are several other options besides the two at the transit station. There's two at La Plata Electric. Over at Nissan, they have one. There's also a couple of other free ones in town. So you know, there are other options to charge your. Electric car. And also some of the other surrounding communities have those options also. I do think. That we need to rethink how we authorize these funds. I am in agreement with Dave that sometimes we. We get overzealous about how we should. Allocate these funds. I'm still not quite certain that. I would support, I wouldn't support EV charging with these funds. And. I do support a sustainable environment, but I just don't think this is the way with these funds.
Okay, thank you. So we have three more minutes each if we would like, Councilor Witter.
I just want to ask a question real quick. Mr. Poole, when does the grant application sunset? For the, but sorry.
So there are currently two grant funding opportunities open. One is. The state of Colorado DC fast charging plaza grant. Which is a combination of state funds as well as state managed federal. The acronym is NEVI, N E V I. Those are federal funds. Those are all managed through the same program through the Colorado Energy Office. So we are part of a larger multi-site grant. At this time that has that, that. These larger amounts, we're talking about a million dollar project that we would be committing about anywhere from ten to twenty percent match on. So that grant has been submitted. The DC fast charge. Plaza's program will continue, but the award amounts will be significantly less and the match amounts might not be as. As generous. And then there's a second grant that the it's a federal grant called the CFI. The Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant. That's a federal grant. The state of Colorado. Is, I think it's Department of Transportation, Colorado Energy Office and the Tourism. Board Council, sorry. Our Department of Tourism are applying jointly to that. To do electrification of our scenic byway, our state scenic byways. On that grant, the state or Durango has asked to be an identified location. So if that is awarded, it's a little less clear, you know, what our ask would be, but. I've been told in my correspondence with the the state agencies that were applying for that federal program. That it would be comparable, that million dollar size for projects. So both these are currently on the table. The grant application opportunities have closed on both of them and. These are the only grants of of this size that I'm aware of currently.
Thank you.
I, if you don't mind, I have a question for you too.
Yeah, I yield my time.
I, so the grant applications have been submitted and the process is closed. So when do you need the money?
We will know when the grants are awarded.
When do you think that would be?
So the. The DC fast charge program, that state program that I mentioned, that first one, we should know. As soon as August or September. This, the community, the CFI program, that would probably be a longer timeframe. Because first, the federal agency would have to award the state of Colorado and then the state of Colorado agencies would have to determine. What their project scope looks like and how Durango is involved with that. So I I can't give an exact timeline, but it would likely be later in twenty twenty-three, if not early. Potentially early twenty twenty-four. That's not a guarantee.
And then follow up question. If you are awarded, let's say August, September. In the grant being awarded, only have to tap into it or make available a year later. I mean, there is a lot of time between you being awarded the grant and actually having to cough up the money. So that brings us pretty much in twenty twenty-four. And I want to make that very clear because the EV charging stations, I do think there's benefit to it. But I don't think we need to have that allocated right now just because of the rates that you provided. If we wanted to use it from the most, in my opinion, logical allocation, which is transit and transportation. And even if we do, it's going to sit there for the next seven months before we do anything with it anyway. Yeah, and if it were to be urgent, in my opinion, we have a hundred and thirty thousand easily available. Within our different city funds and that is more or less restricted, I should say. And thank you very much for that clarification. Then I I do want to respond a little bit to Melissa, your comment. And because you were very clear, like I, I think it's important that we spend it on transportation and transit. And I agree, I I agree with you know, the EV vehicles and all the free transit. There's a lot of things that I can support. But just the mere fact that you use that wording, it should be spent on transportation and transit. And we have a specific allocation voted on by that ballot for that purpose. So we are really. It's a really interesting process.
Other.
Well, I have, I'm done with it.
So there are counselors about their three minutes. Well, I'll respond. I, once again, I appreciate your perspective, but again, I'm I'm leaning on the perspective of. The attorney that helped us write our ballot language, the our first attorney that helped us review the ballot language and determine that it could be suspended on. Tourism related activities which in which can include transportation and also. Our current city attorney, Mark Morgan. So while I appreciate your perspective, I mean, it's okay to agree to disagree. That's what we're doing. And that's, that's where we have it. So. I think that tourism related issues are very multifaceted. And they, they can encompass many different related expenses for the city. And that's just my perspective. And. I think that that is the perspective of a lot of people who did approve the ballot language, hoping that it would be spent on tourism related. Activities. So I think that. It was something that passed very narrowly and I think as a result of that. We all know that we've spent, you know, the the increase from, I think we saw the numbers to visit Durango with the passage of the. Increased tax is substantial. It's close to double. And so I'm suggesting that having that money go to infrastructure in our city and in our community. In my opinion, is a valuable expense and it may not be to others. So I think with that, we can go with the roll call.
Councilor Bosman's?
No.
Yes.
What's the motion on the floor? It's the hundred twenty-eight towards.
The motion on the floor.
Motion before isn't the motion, because Olivia put up the. Oh, yours failed. Okay, so the motion on the floor is the one that, okay, I apologize. Thank you.
Or the administration's.
The recommendation. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean.
The motion I have listed here is as recommended by staff and additionally to fund transit free through October. If that's correct.
Figured out that it's failed. You can request a substitute vote.
Okay.
Someone can make a compromise motion suggestion.
Okay.
Or you can.
I see what you're saying. We know this.
Ask for other options.
Do we have any other options from council?
Yeah. Yeah, can I actually, Tom, can I have you pull up visit Durango's original request for money?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Hope so.
To reset the clock and make sure. Did you even kind of get to a motion fair and clear?
I will, I promise. Okay. That was two forty-five. And then the full amount is three thirty, three sixty-one. Sorry. Okay, I'm gonna make a, or amend substitute motion to award. Visit Durango the. Two forty-five, five, and the remaining amount to go to transportation to extend free transit.
Okay, discussion from council. And we go back to the five-three, correct, Mr. Morgan? Councilor Bosman's?
So what would be the basis for transit? What what is the, now we're talking about two forty-five minus three. So whatever the, so what is the, what is the logic to say, okay, we're not just. Why, my, my question really is why are we trying to spend this money? We are just throwing out numbers and saying, oh, let's do a transit. I just find it very confusing that we just have to do this. We can do it whenever there's a project. We can appropriate the money if there's. If, if, if there, now we're just saying, oh, let's do it to transit. I mean, do we have an exact number for free transit? No, we have no number for free transit for the rest of the year. Do we have a number for the signage? Yes, a hundred, but it's not broken down. So I, I just think we're really not doing a very good job here representing our community and ballot language. And just trying to spend it because we have the money. Well, I think if it was my money and it was me, my, my personal business, I would leave in the. In my bank account instead of just saying, okay, I have. I have something here to spend it. I I know I'm not going to go with this.
The other counselors?
Yeah, the the fact that you think our staff didn't put in time and effort into these proposals and actually well thought. Well, well, well thought out, sorry. With signage and the parking proposal that they put together and that we adopted as a city after the they put together. Like I, I just have a hard time saying that we're just throwing money away or trying to figure it out. Physi Dranko did support the EV project too, and so hopefully working with them with their proposal that they asked and outlined here. Visit Durango did support the EV project too, and so hopefully working with them with their proposal that they asked and outlined here, they can also maybe incorporate that into something that they would support as well.
Counselor Yazi?
Thank you. I can see the value in giving transportation the money to help with the free trolley, because that helps the environment, because people actually ride that up and downtown, you know, here and there. And also the fact that they can still have the money to do the signage, what I, which I do think is important, so it can direct people to where they need to go, to the parking and all the other items that were listed in the proposal two weeks ago. So that was the transportation. Then for Visit Durango, you know, they do a lot of good work. They had the pass-through grants that they exceed their delivery on those, and they still have people waiting for those. So there are projects in the, the queue that they can follow forward with and supplement what they're doing now. So I see that's, that's of great value. And so that's why I support Jessica's motion. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Counselor Woodruff?
Rachel, could I ask a question? I'm wondering, would the city's transportation signage be aligned with Visit Durango's mission with, with the with the, yeah, with the trail and infrastructure enhancement projects? Could that potentially be a pass-through for given, maybe not giving, but the city having money kind of come through as Durango for that? Because, sorry, I'm, I'm rambling.
Yes, it is possible. We've considered things like that in the past. I've run the idea of EV chargers and transportation signage by several of our board members, and they are open to the idea. However, I cannot speak on their behalf and don't want to promise anything here today, but it is a possibility.
Could I potentially amend the motion? Is it, is it potential to do that? Or do we have to go vote for this motion?
No, you can amend it.
Could I propose?
I think it would be amended in the substitute motion.
Okay, I, I'm gonna technically amend the substitute motion. I think I move that we award Visit Durango 245.5 as per their original asking amount, and then the remainder go towards sustainability for EV chargers to help get there most of the way to the grants. And then if there's conversation around, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out how this could potentially work for everybody involved. That's my proposal for amended motion.
Amendment motion on Visit Durango at 245, transportation with the surplus, which is
no EV charger capability for once.
Motion transportation, he's gonna send that to the EV chargers at 133.
115.5.
That's, that's, that's the motion on the floor, as amended.
I'll second. Discussion.
I would just like to encourage, I appreciate that, because I think it's easier with the grants pass-through stuff. And then also Visit Durango has in here trail and infrastructure enhancement projects with bike racks and trail adoptathon. And so I feel like getting those signages where people, helps people with parking and visitors would be super helpful if the Visit Durango board would support that. So that's what I would just encourage if this goes forward.
Other councillor comments?
I, I appreciate the attempt to come up with a motion that passes. So on the motion that is now on the floor, the EV chargers, as was just confirmed, won't need any funding till next year likely, because it will take till August, September before it's awarded. And then quite a bit of time before we actually need the funds. And that does not correct the, or in my opinion, correct the use of sustainable marketing funds per the ballot language for something that is more, in my opinion, related to transportation and transit. And I do fully support the EV chargers. It is my opinion that we are trying to somehow spend these funds. And I would really prefer for us as a council to say, this is not gonna work out. Come back, staff, please, something that is more in line with the language of the ballot, the, the original intent of the language of the ballot. And they have done a, a good job trying to use up those funds, but we don't have to use them up. And parallel, I think we as a council should really consider going back out to the community with the working group to re-figure out how that budget allocation for the larger snacks might better represent what our community wants.
Thank you. Other councillors? Counselor Yazi?
Okay, I'd like to speak against the amended motion that Dave made and my reasons are because we're funding the EV again, which I still have problems about where that falls in the funding cycle. I know I've heard all the arguments for a couple of weeks and you know, EVs. And, and I went to the CLM this past weekend and I talked to the vendors there. And you know what? They still have, they still pollute. They just leave their pollution at the generation plant. You know, those electric cars don't pollute. They just don't pollute here in Durango. It'll take me a bit to get over that part of green. So I still support Jessica's motion without the amendment, the substitute amendment. And I think it Oh, oh, good. Sorry. Okay. I don't support Dave's. I think we should go back to the original. And that's just how I feel. And I do think that giving the money to Visit Durango to do their sustainable marketing, which is what the letter of the law says. And we can always debate the pros and cons. Every lawyer has an open perspective. And I feel confident that Visit Durango is going to allocate those funds where they see the need in the community. That's all I have to say.
A point of clarification, if I may.
All right.
Is that, is that another amended motion that you were making? Or is that just a comment? Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. I seconded it. We've had a discussion. I don't need any further discussion unless councillors want to have any more of their three minutes. Wait, no, I'm gonna, on the table, Dave's motion's on the table. We have to vote for it. We can have one more round of comments. I think we should try not to repeat ourselves if we can in this three minutes. Because I, I'm hearing a lot of repeat conversations. So if you'd like to say something, just try not to repeat what you've said.
Well, I, I'm just wondering, it seems we agree as a council pretty much on the Visit Durango part. And I'm just wondering, is it worthwhile to amend the final time the motion? So we are making a bit more unified vote? Or we can go ahead and have an ununified vote, maybe have it fail. Like, I mean, I'd be happy to make another amendment to that motion, pulling out the, what was it on your transit or the EV? So if we, the EV to me does not seem urgent. I won't repeat myself because we have for next year. So if we pull that out, we still have the opportunity to even at a later point, and we have a more consistent.
We have a motion on the table, hasn't yet been amended.
Can I amend it? That's my question. Are you, do I amend, ask?
I haven't had a chance, I haven't had a chance to speak yet. So I'm gonna take my first five minutes since you.
I was, I was just wondering if I can make an amendment and when one.
But I want to respond to the motion on the table before you make an amendment.
Oh.
Well, because I haven't responded to his amended motion yet.
I'm positive that you will give him an opportunity to have the floor again, so it's proper for you to speak now.
Yes, that's what I was hoping. And so I I appreciate the amended motion that Counselor Woodruff made. I appreciate the opportunity to ensure that we have funds set aside for matching the grants. And also to meet the Visit Durango demands or request. I think it's a compromise that works in this case. I would like to have seen funds towards transportation, certainly. And unfortunately, it seems like what gets cut. It's always the first, you know, it always is what gets cut. And that is the really unfortunate thing in the situation. So I, I'd like to see us take a motion. I'm still, my, I, I'm, I'm still not certain about it, just because I, transportation is so important and it is, it is cut time and time and time again. And we know we're hitting a wall with it. I think it was 2027. But, you know, we already have reduced service from what we had. We have shorter headways than what we used to have. And all that's really unfortunate to me. So I'm, I'm, you know, that's just my state. But I think that in the end, we have to go somewhere with this as a council team. So that's my thoughts. And with that, Counselor Bosman, if you wanted to.
Now, I'll ask a very simple question to Dave. Would you be open if I amend your motion to exclude the EV?
So you can't, you can't get a pre-commitment to a vote.
So I just have to.
You, do you have the floor? You can offer a substitute motion. I wouldn't recommend you add another amendment, because that gets really confusing. But if you have a motion in mind, you can offer a substitute. If that substitute gets a second, it can be voted on by the council. If it fails, then the underlying motion before the substitution returns to the floor and you vote on that. I know this is kind of a long, bumpy process for you guys, but it's a learning curve, and this will go much smoother. And we're getting very close to a vote after having a very good discussion. So.
Okay, I make a substitute motion to appropriate the funds, as Dave was saying, for the Visit Durango. And not appropriate the EV or the other funds with those remaining funds remaining in the fund balance, fund balance of the larger snacks allocation.
Comments from council?
So that motion needs a second.
Oh, that motion needs a second. But thank you.
But one year, one year, so we're looking at to save 245,000 to Visit Durango or the remainder to.
Stays in fund balance.
I mean, you can, you, look, you can withdraw your second. That's within rubbish rules too. It's up to you. But if there's gonna be any further discussion or a vote on it, it does need a second.
No, second.
So the motion fails without a second, you're back to the underlying motion, which is Dave's amended motion. Sorry, I misunderstood. So there is a second.
Discussion from council. May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Harmer?
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Prochambiel?
No.
Counselor Woodruff?
No.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusuf?
No. Motion fails. Now we're back to Dave's motion.
And historically, you just go right into the vote on that, but you can have more discussion if you want.
I, I would, unless there's opposition from council, I'd request a motion.
My understanding of the motion, and the clerk can help me, is it's 245,000 to Visit Durango and the balance to the EV chargers.
Remaining ones to the EV chargers, yes.
That's the motion on the floor.
Sustainability or EV chargers?
The sustainability.
To the Sustainability Department earmarked for EV chargers.
To the EV chargers.
Correct.
Okay, I let, yeah, councillor Beal was just, I, I, I'm, I'm still disappointed about the transportation, but we did discuss. She was reminding me that she thinks that there are some opportunities in Visit Durango funding to go towards transportation. Maybe, maybe. Well, you know, and, yeah, I, okay.
Are we just, are we, no more discussion?
Unless you'd like to, you can have discussion on the motion.
I, I think this is the best compromise that, that we can find, that, you know, everybody kind of walks away a little bit banged up, but I feel like this is an opportunity for us to kind of grow as a council and to do what we think is best for our community. I think this is an important step forward, and I think this is a good compromise. I think there's opportunities further down the road where we can find better solutions.
Thank you, Counselor Woodruff. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Harmer, may we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bosman?
No.
Mayor Prochambiel?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
No.
And Mayor Yusuf?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Thank you for the learning experience, Mr. Morgan. That was very, that was, that was new to me. I've never gotten anything quite like that. Okay. We're moving on now to item number 12, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, everybody. Committee, Board and Liaison Reports. This is information only. Thank you. This is an opportunity for councillors to report on liaison positions. Going forward, just so councillors know, we will be able to include written board reports in this section, such as our financial advisory board. So we can all read that, that information, and the public will be able to read that information in our agenda and be informed without having to, a councillor having to report on it. So for now, though, do we have any council reports?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Yazi. I had the Creative Economy Commission last week. The primary, primary aspect of the discussion and meeting, board meeting last week was to discuss and subsequent approval of grant applications for the second round of lodgers tax funding. There was a unanimous decision by the board to approve, but a ton of work went into initially review the initial $440,000 of grant applications that came to C and C, the CC for recommendation. I was supposed to say I was super impressed with the board's competence in every aspect of our creative economy and robust discussion on how to best allocate desired funds to our projects throughout the city. We also welcome new board member Seth Furtney to the, to the board, and he brought a lot of great conversation to the meeting. We also spoke a great deal about community cabal. Let me try it again. We spoke a lot to community collaboration, how the creative economy contributes to said collaboration. So it was great.
Thank you for attending that. Any other councillor? Okay, Counselor Yazi?
Okay, thank you. I had the opportunity to go to the C O M, what's that, C, CML, Colorado Municipal League Conference. And, you know, I had a really great time. I learned a lot. I visited a lot of small mountain communities and spoke to them about their needs, comparing them to ours. And it seems that we all have the similar problem areas and similar successes. So that was all good. And like the larger towns, they have also the similar problems. It's just a larger area. And it turns out that I did attend one homeless unhoused workshop. And it seems that all communities think that they're getting people importing the unhoused homeless population to their communities. But according to the studies that they've done, that necessarily isn't true. So I attended that, and I also went to another, other workshops concerning housing issues and aspects to try to help attainable and affordable housing. And, and there's a lot of good thinkers out there with a whole lot of good theories on how we can go about this. So I felt really positive about that. But thank you for, Durango for sending me. I really learned a lot.
Thank you for attending.
I went to the CML conference as well. It was great. A lot of great, and Erin, our Assistant City Manager, spoke. Was a panel, no, speaker, panelist, there you go. I couldn't tell the right word. At one of the sessions, that was great. But yeah, there was a lot of great breakout sessions, a lot of leading in crisis, housing, mental health, like a lot of, you can tell the theme around government right now is, is that. So, yeah, it was great. Yeah.
All right. Appreciate it. Any other reports? Okay, and I don't have any myself. So moving on to introduction of ordinances. This is 13.1. Mr. Morgan, do you want to introduce this one?
Sure. As part of the new agenda format, when we introduce new things to be considered, I've asked that they be identified where they're coming from, either from Sure. As part of the new agenda format, when we introduce new things to be considered, I've asked that they be identified where they're coming from, either from. The council or from the administration or from the city attorney's office. This one is coming from me. And the entire spirit of the ordinance is to create more public acceptance and. I lost words. Confidence in the ethics board and the ethics procedures that we have in place. Those things have been in the news. They've been problematic. This is a cleanup ordinance to somewhat limit the jurisdiction of the ethics board to avoid some of that. And again, it's time for full discussion tonight. It'll be printed fully, and then we can have a full debate or discussion about it. When it does come up for adoption, if it gets the votes to go forward to that tonight.
Okay, do we need an ordinance number to bring this?
We would assign it to the next.
Be zero two thousand twenty-three zero zero one two.
Okay, do we have a motion?
And what, the motion is just to.
Just to take it from introduction to consideration of adoption.
I'll move to take ordinance two zero two three dash zero zero one two to, into consideration.
I'll second. Do we have any discussion? You really don't need, okay, don't need it in this case?
No, I mean, you always have to have the opportunity to have a very limited discussion on the interdict, introduction of something. That's usually limited to just the rationale, which is what I provided, that it's. A cleanup to restore confidence in an ethics process. That's all you would typically say. You wouldn't debate why it does or why it doesn't, or what could do it better.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councilor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yussit?
Yes. Oops. Okay, moving on to other new business. Discussion on possible action to appoint two candidates to the Board of Ethics and two candidates to the Design Review Board. And I guess we are doing a request for. Wait, my. Did I, my, okay, okay, that's fourteen, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's second, okay. We're doing a request first, a request for a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing a contract to exchange real estate of one, two, three, five, Camino del Rio. And two oh one East Twelfth Street between the Durango Fire Protection District and the City of Durango.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this usually is on the consent agenda. This is just a request for a public hearing. Under the new agenda format, it looks like it falls here. So just a request for a public hearing.
I will make a motion to set up public hearing during our July eighteen twenty twenty-three city council meeting to consider an ordinance. Do you want me to say it all out? Authorizing a contract to exchange real estate of one, two, three, five, Camino del Rio and two oh one East Twelfth Street. Between the D F P D and the City of Durango. Do I have a second? I'll second. Discussion.
I'll just add, since we are on a new agenda.
Yeah.
This is one of the things that I've been quoted about, that we are trying to be more transparent and more public. This is a major item of public consideration. It's the ultimately ending of vote to shift City Hall from this building to a different facility in the fire department from one place to another. Under the new format, as I mentioned, he thought that was be entitled to have its own separate public hearing. So there'll be a public hearing at the next meeting, and then it will come up another time when it's actually on to pass for a vote. But this is creating multiple opportunities to have public input on a major ordinance that would affect the community. So this is.
Sure, just a quick clarification that it's just the exchange of real estate. The. Actual switch of City Hall would take another vote in funding that needs to happen. I just want to make sure it's just the exchange of real estate, not the. Construction of a city civic center or anything at this point, just the exchange. When they come up, they're like, whoa, what happened there?
But I would guarantee that that, that type of discussion will be invited and come up. So those questions could be answered at a public hearing. So this is a good thing. We're being more transparent, giving more opportunity for public input. At a regular meeting before we even get to the point of a final vote on a part of a larger project.
Wonderful. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Can we have discussion ourselves?
Discussion, the discussion will take place at the public hearing. It's just, it's kind of a path through vote to. Like you said, fusion like consent agenda, but we wanted to highlight it here, because it's announcing something more important than typical.
I, is it possible we need to make comments?
No. Generally, I mean, on what?
On this, this topic and this post.
Not until it comes up for and fully advertised public hearing. I would. Encourage you to withhold your comments until the public can be fully noticed and present on the public hearing.
Because the agenda item discusses this, there's exactly this real straight transaction. The reason I ask you is because I've been trying to get this more transparent and polished. And every time it gets pushed out or not supported. And here we have it on the agenda, properly noticed, and I still cannot make a comment. That's just really frustrating. Because I just keep adding weeks and weeks and weeks, and it's been passing with sickling. This is no longer the discussion and the approach. This is a discussion on package deals almost.
So as I understand. The process tonight, which I have designed, the only thing you're voting on is whether or not you're going to have a public here. This is not the time to conduct a public hearing. It will be at the meeting where we properly notice it, and we've invited the public to participate fully with proper notice. I mean, your only comment would be limited to, I encourage having a public hearing, so I don't want to have a public hearing, because that's the only thing that's happening tonight. Not the merits of it, but whether or not we have a public hearing. But your comments would tend to say that you, you want to have more public hearings, or you would need to stop there tonight.
Yeah, I, I just am, I'm very disappointed with the process we've taken. This is going on since pretty much January, and this is not, this even now, it's only agenda. It's still not a public, it's still not.
I'm going to stop you as mayor of the meeting. I heard our city attorney say that you should comment right now. On whether we want a public hearing or not, and limit it not to the debates of the process. Or, or anything like that. We're just talking about whether we want a public hearing and our next meeting. Where we can inform the community and have the community be in favor or against and listen, and then we make our comments.
You're the chair. Thank you.
I'm sorry. That's fine, you do the city attorney. All right, so with that, may we have a roll call, Ms. Harmer?
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councilor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yussit?
Yes. Okay, now we're moving on to discussion on possible action to appoint two candidates to the board of ethics and two candidates to the design review board. I understand that during this round of open applications for these positions, four applications were received. Two for the design review board and one and two for the board of ethics. Both those boards have two open seats. The applications were forwarded to all of council for review. Do I have a motion from one of the members of the Board of Ethics interview? Team, which was Mayor Protem Buell and Counselor Yazi.
I'll move to appoint the two applicants that applied to the Board of Ethics.
Ten Shippman and Robert Bates Rothing.
Yes. Any discussion? May we have a roll call?
I was going to say, I, I voted last time against the financial advisory board because there were multiple applicants. And less positions, and in this case, I did have a chance to review the resumes, and they seem very professional people. There's two applicants, two positions, so I will support that.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselor? May we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councilor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Yussit?
Yes. Do I have a motion from one of the members of the design review board interview team, which was Counselor Yazi and Counselor Bosmans?
I make a motion that we approve Carolyn Hunter. Hunter and Bonnie Gordon to Design Review Board.
And a second.
All right, any discussion?
Same here. I, I was not part of the interview. I did, because it was. What was his name again? Now, anyway, there were two people that did the interviews. I did receive the resumes. They look very qualified. I think they are existing members that we applied. I will support that, obviously.
Excellent, thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councilor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yussit?
Yes. Yes, sorry. All right. Moving on to. Where are we? Other matters. So. Do we have any other matters from city council that they would like to bring up in this section? Do you want to discuss this at all, Mr. Morgan? Just kind of, just a review of this catch-all nature of this section?
I think that's adequate. It's catch-all. It's for non-dispositive. This is not a chance to redo any part of a prior meeting or part of this meeting. It's just in case something comes up that we couldn't predict, it gives us an opportunity to deal with it.
Thank you.
You know, I'm just wondering, was there an update on the scope?
Sure.
You know, the one that we saw the emails about?
Did you read the response that Tommy Crosby and I sent out to the citizens that were. Commenting about the status and the five bids that we had go out and then the current status of the project? Did you? Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great. Any other comments? Any other matters? I would just add that. I will remind the community that we are sending out a community survey to three thousand residents that have been randomly selected requesting your input. It looks like this, because I received one. And, and I will be finished, I will be filling it out, because I was randomly selected. So I really hope that the community takes the time to fill out these surveys. It's our opportunity to get engaged from the community on the livability of our city, the services we provide, and your input on. Quality of life in Durango. It's a baseline for us. It takes about fifteen minutes to complete, and your input is important. So if you get one of these fabulous cards, please take the time to fill it out for us. It's important. I know, I'm so, don't try to take mine. Okay, with that, we will move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment now for items not on the business agenda? I don't know if I want to, thank you.
Okay, my glasses on here. My name's Karen Aneci. I live at fifteen oh four East Third Avenue. And I'm here to express support. For a citizens' work-study group to examine all the ramifications of moving forward with the proposed mini roundabout. Configuration, that configuration that fails to address many of the objections. That were voiced at the public information meeting held in May of this year at the library. So I'm speaking on behalf and at the request of the Board of the Boulevard Neighbor Association that met today. And they wanted me to tell you that they are seeking to work with the city. On addressing the intersection at Floridian, Florida and East Third Avenue. However. We're concerned that there's no process in place that allows consideration of alternate engineering plans that are likely to cost less. Benefit the community more, and most of all, provide a long-term rather than a Band-Aid solution. So we did a site visit with the consultant and staff on June eighth. Presented alternate engineering conceptual plans and asked why the city. Was not considering using any of the land they already owned. To the northwest of the intersection. We've received no response from staff, which concerns us that. Communication to the council might also either be filtered or worse, not happening at all. Finally, to answer Mr. Woodruff's question on how such groups are pulled together. You know, community development did an outstanding job several years ago when the citizens of Durango became. Rightfully concerned that Durango's housing stock was being seriously depleted. By the rush of investors seeking second properties to be used as vacation rentals. I sat on that volunteer committee. The eventual outcome was a system that received widespread support to limit the number of vacation rentals in town, and it was the public. Not the planners, not the consultant, but it was the public who correctly forecasted the consequences. Of the loss of Durango's precious housing stock. So please, please get involved. In this process, the midtown traffic plan, and do not discount the public's knowledge. That the public has knowledge to share, even if they're not engineers. They have something of value. To contribute here, and in the end, it's that larger community that pays the price when hasty. But convenient consultant-driven decisions are held sacred. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. I came to address the council on four issues. The first issue that really concerns me is the next steps. I'm asking this council to create a working group, or at least have a town hall. Consisting of the businesses that are in the central business district and concerned citizens. Because next steps impacts every business in the central business district. My family owns a restaurant on Main Street. We are deeply concerned about tearing up Main Street. I notice in the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, there's an indication that city council is going forward. Over the objections of seventy-five small businesses on Main Street. Including Rio Grande Land, the Strater, and the Main Mall. I'm asking you to listen to business owners, because small businesses are the backbone of Durango. And that sales tax is what pays livable wages downtown. The second issue I'm concerned about, and I'm the squeaky wheel, I'm asking city council to eliminate lot size requirements. Any in one, two, and three to accommodate accessory dwelling units. Housing seems very important to this city council. There is no lot size in Ian four, five, or six, or even south of college. Equal opportunity and fairness to the locals should be at the top of your core values. People are clamoring for one bedrooms, and ADUs are just one tool in the toolbox to help property owners and renters. Giving an incentive to build an A D U, if I own a piece of property that's six thousand, six thousand square feet. Is grossly unfair to me. I think you should be fair to everyone in this town. Number three, raising the parking meters is, to be, is a terrible idea to locals. It will only push more employees into the neighborhoods. There is no trolley that runs late at night to ride when you work nights. I work nights at our family restaurant. I had to drive, and I parked where I felt safe, which was close to the downtown area. Number four, the open house for the malfunction junction that I attended, most of the attendees were totally against it. Business owners on Fourteenth Street felt that they were not listened to by staff. I heard that expression over and over. I'm asking you to create a working group for the. Florida road mess that we had, that we've all lived with. I shouldn't have to be an engineer to participate in a working group. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Nick Aneci?
Nick Aneci, eight thirty-five East Second Avenue, Suite two twenty. I'm here on behalf of the B and A and multiple property owners that are adjacent to or near the. Intersection of the East Third and Florida, and the primary reason I'm here is, is a formality. To, to further go on record with, with respect to. Past communications that have come from my office to city staff regarding. The opposition and concerns about the city's proposals on that. In listening to the study session from earlier today, it was noted that. City staff had reported little in the way of public feedback concerning that particular project. Which gives me concern, given the number of emails and letters that have come out of my law office to city staff. The latest of which was on June ninth and went to, I provided copies to Mr. Morgan as well. And I think city staff is, should be well aware of the position that, that I've taken on behalf of my clients. But when I hear that conveyed in a public meeting that very little has been raised from the public. I, I don't, I, I want to go on record noting that that's not an accurate reflection of, of what I have sent to the city. And I hope that that can be corrected moving. and I hope that that can be corrected moving forward to the degree that Mayor Youssef had articulated other means in which the public can communicate to city council, such as one-on-one meetings or the like. I am fine with that, but in my practice, historically, it has been more than adequate to send my communications to a city staff member, copying the city attorney, of course, and having it articulated accurately to council. If there is more that I need to do in that regard to ensure it's accurately communicated, I invite any instruction you'll provide, but I do want to go on, on record, having stated what I have seen. Thank you.
Mr. Aneci, just for the record, you saw part of a study session today where that was mentioned. There was a study session two weeks prior where I specifically communicated to the staff that we'd received your plan and they were considering it. I'm just not sure that you saw that one.
I did not. I appreciate you.
There was a full study session where your communications with me were brought up to the staff. The staff acknowledged that they had them, and that that study session, it was indicated, at least to me, that that would be considered in full as a part of the process.
Well, I appreciate that, and I'm glad that that's the case. Again, I took pause when I heard that there wasn't really any public, or very little in the way of concern raised, because it obviously isn't consistent, but.
And we can get you the date for that study session if you'd like to review it. But it was, in fact, the plan that you proposed. I did mention it and pointed it out to staff, and they said they would make that part of the record going forward.
Very good. I thank you again for noting that.
Do we have any virtual public participation?
No, Mayor, no one has raised their hand.
Thank you so much. All right, with that, moving on to the last item of the agenda, which is discussion and possible action to convene in the executive session to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B concerning litigation filed by Matt Roan, specifically Roan versus City of Durango, 2023 CV 30039, filed in a La Plata County District Court. Do I have a motion? I think we have to say it. It is, great.
I mean, the whole point is we cannot discuss anything that we haven't completely reviewed.
Since I did it, that's okay. So we, per se move is okay?
I'll second.
Any discussion? May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Harmer?
Counselor Boskins?
Yes.
Mayor Protonville?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
We have three more, and you can take motion on all three.
Okay.
Great. I'll take motion on all three.
I'll move to go into executive session for consideration and possible action on Mr. Roan's offer to settle Roan v. City of Durango, 2023 CV 30039, filed in La Plata County District Court.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Boskins?
Yes.
Mayor Protonville?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef? Yes.
I'll move to go into executive session for discussion and possible action to convene an executive session to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B concerning litigation involving Matt Roan, specifically Roan v. City of Durango et al. v. Matt Roan, 2023 CV 30034, filed in La Plata County District Court.
Second.
Any discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Boskins?
Yes.
Mayor Protonville?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef? Yes.
I'll move to go into executive session for consideration and possible action on Mr. Roan's offer to settle City of Durango et al. v. Matt Roan, 2023 CV 30034, filed in La Plata County District Court.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Boskins?
Yes.
Mayor Protonville?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Hi there.
Thanks.
I'm writing my product.
Did you tell all people that we sent?
All the sets.
Sorry, I'm going to send a link to that section of the report out to my entire staff.
I'm glad.
Yeah, that was my link. I timestamped it when we started the project so that I can go straight through that timestamp.
Yeah.
I also know that was the final point. It's like, what? So now we're still waiting to hear. I mean, sorry.
Yeah.
Good.
I have another.
You remember some events that were probably just Spanish and for us. Mm-hmm.